We're going to have, today is the National Day of Mourning for George H., President George H.W. Bush, our forty-first president. And so if you are okay with it, we'd like to have a short moment of silence before we go on to the pledge. The pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. Roll call, please, Sarah. Johnson?
Here.
Lathrop?
Yep.
Mayor?
Here.
Wheelock?
Yes, ma'am.
Klaus is here.
Here.
Gorfulet?
Here.
Crawford?
Here.
Okay. We have approval of the minutes. We have our minutes of our November twenty-first, two thousand and eighteen, regular meeting.
Motion that we accept the minutes from the previous meeting of November twenty-first? Support.
Moved by Commissioner Mayor, supported by Commissioner Wheelock. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, thank you. Now is our chance for first public comment. Sarah, will you read the rules, please?
Any person shall be permitted to address a meeting of the Board of Commissioners, which is required to be open to the public under the provision of the Michigan Open Meetings Act. Public comment shall be carried out in accordance with the following board rules and procedures. Any person wishing to address the Board shall state his or her name and address. No person shall be allowed to speak more than once on the same matter excluding time needed to answer Commissioners' questions, if any. The chairperson shall control the amount of time each person shall be allowed to speak, which shall not exceed three minutes. The chairperson may at his or her discretion extend the amount of time any person is allowed to speak. Public comment will be solicited during the two public comment periods noted in Rule five point four, Order of Business. However, public comment will generally be received at any time during the meeting regarding specific topic currently under discussion by the Board. Members of the public wishing to comment should raise their hand or pass a note to the clerk in order to be recognized and shall not address the Board until called upon by the chairperson. Please be respectful in referring from personal or political attacks.
Thank you. With that, do we have anybody for first public comment today? Nobody's running for the podium. We will move on to approval of the agenda. I do have one thing to add. Under Old Unfinished Business, I would like to add a short discussion about our appointment of a member to the EDC. We're going to, it's a short discussion, but I would like to talk about that with the whole Board. And we also need to remove the closed session, is that correct?
That's correct.
We do not need a closed session. Anybody else have anything to add or remove? Do we have a motion?
Aye, so move with the addition.
Support. Moved by Commissioner Lathrop, supported by Commissioner Johnson. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, we have an agenda. Move on to the consent calendar, Sarah, please.
The purpose of the consent calendar is to expedite business by grouping non-controversial items together to be dealt with by one Commission motion without discussion. Any member of the Commission, staff, or the public may ask that any item on the consent calendar be removed and placed elsewhere on the agenda for full discussion. Such request will be automatically respected. If any item is not removed from the consent calendar, the action noted, receive and file or approval, is approved by a single Commission action adopting the consent calendar. All information identified on the consent calendar can be viewed in its entirety at A, receive. One, Northern Lakes Community Mental Health Minutes of October eighteen, two thousand and eighteen. Two, Northwestern Regional Airport Commission Minutes, October thirtieth, two thousand and eighteen. Three, Monthly Road Commission Report. Four, order on motion for summary disposition, matter of Edwin Martell. B, approvals. One, agreement for Michigan State University Extension Services. Two, Land Bank, approval of amended bylaws and appointment of James Baker. Three, amended resolution number one ninety-four, two thousand and eighteen.
Okay, thank you. Anybody have anything that they would like removed from the consent calendar for further discussion?
Well, possibly Jennifer wants to speak from the Extension Service, and there's a gentleman in the room from the State Land Bank who might want to speak, I'm not sure.
Okay.
Mr. Tischler will be addressing the agenda item for Camp Pugsley.
Oh, okay.
Thank you.
Okay, so you still want, but you'd like to remove B one for, okay?
Only if Jennifer would like to speak, I guess. Nice.
I can speak if needed to speak. If not, I can remain on the consent calendar.
Oh, that's fine.
Okay.
Okay.
Anybody else?
I was just going to mention, the reason for the Land Bank membership change is the previous Land Bank bylaws required the county planner to be a member, and because of the fact that we no longer have a county planner, we've been operating short a member for a number of months now. And we thought, the Land Bank felt that Jim Baker, the Equalization Director, would be great because he could help us evaluate parcels of property that we're looking at to take over to. So, I think it was a great change to do that.
Okay, thank you. With that, is there anything anybody would like removed?
So, are we removing B one or no?
No.
Okay.
Nope. If everybody's good with that.
Chairman, I would move to approve the consent calendar as provided.
I'll second that.
Okay. Moved by Commissioner Wheelock, supported by Commissioner Mayor. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
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 Any opposed?
That's one of my favorites.
Who's that?
A phone.
Somebody's probably.
It was fun. Okay. Okay. So the consent, I got distracted. The consent calendar is approved, correct? Okay. We will move on to special orders of business. So I'm going to come over here to the podium, and if Jim Cook could come with me, please. This is easier to do it this way. So we have, Mr. Cook is, okay, yeah, is unfortunately retiring and leaving the Road Commission. So we have a certificate of appreciation, which I will read. The Grand Travers County Board of Commissioners is proud to acknowledge your involvement in making Grand Travers County a better place for us to live and enjoy. For your time of service and valuable contributions to the Grand Travers County Road Commission for the past six years, we thank you very much. Thank you, sir.
If it would be okay, I'd like to just take a few minutes, just because this will probably be my last time at the podium on, as a public servant. So first off, I'd like to, I'd just like to take the time and thank everybody. I sincerely appreciate the opportunity to be part of the community and to make a difference. I'd said this before, I think when I first started, my personal goal has always been, and throughout my career, was to solve problems and make people's lives better. And so that's, that's what I tried to do, my time here. I'm grateful to been, I am grateful to have been, been able to join the Grand Travers County Road Commission at a time that funding was, was a big challenge. Our reputation was less than, less than glowing. And there was a lack of teamwork and leadership at the Road Commission. We accomplished a lot. Coming from the private sector, it didn't take, it didn't take me long to scratch my head and, and sort of huddle up with the other folks at the Road Commission that came from the private sector and, and just ask, ask the question, you know, does this make sense to you? And, and because of that, you know, we, we made some significant changes. And so I won't, I won't go through all of the accomplishments, but, you know, you heard much about, much tonight already about the accomplishments as far as the millage. You know, we got our first millage ever in the county in two thousand and thirteen. We got a renewal in two thousand and sixteen. We developed an asset management plan. We've accomplished a lot. With the millage and with the additional funding that we've been able to secure because of the millage, you know, we've been able to put in about five and a half million dollars a year in routine maintenance into our road system, and we've been averaging about eight million dollars in projects every year over the last six years. So, so that's, I'm very proud of that. The last thing I'll tell you is, you know, retirement's a bittersweet transition, and, and I've always, I've always worked. And I'm going to miss my friends and the family that, that I've come to know here in Grand Travers County and, and at the Road Commission. Again, I've sincerely enjoyed working with, with all of you, and the media, and the public. And I believe the Grand Travers County Road Commission has a very bright future. We have a committed staff and Board, and then our partners. And I've never, ever been more proud to be part of an organization. So a lot of people have asked me, what's next? If I'm moving away or if I'm going away for the winter? And, and the answer is no. My wife and I, we enjoy winter, we enjoy where we live. So we plan to spend more time with family and friends. I have a lot of hobbies, a lot of hobbies that would probably shock a lot of people here.
Great. You going to share any?
That I don't get, I don't get to spend enough time at. And so I will be doing that. And, and again, I'll, I'll be seeing people, and, and again, I appreciate your support and the opportunity to work with you.
Thank you very much. Bob, you have a comment?
You know, I liked you up until you said you liked winter, but one, one of the things, I know, yeah. One of the things that, you know, everybody that comes into public service hopes is that they make a difference. And I can tell you without a doubt that the legacy you have left for the Road Commission is head and shoulders above where it was when you started. So between your leadership and the Commission, things are, I don't know, a thousand percent better. You leveraged all your dollars for, you squeezed every nickel and dime out of that millage. And I don't know if the public's fully aware of that, but I salute you, sir.
Thank you. Dan, go ahead.
I remember when you remarked about the conversation you had with your daughter. She says, Daddy, what do you do? And you said, well, honey, I fix things. And that's very true. You fixed a lot of things in this county, and you've done it with grace and, and class. So, thank you so much.
Everybody all good? Thank you very much, sir. Okay. We will move on. We have departmental items from Central Dispatch, Tyler Technologies Public Safety Software. Welcome, Jason.
Good evening. Jason Torrey, nine-one-one Director. I submitted a proposal to you that outlines my request to purchase two additional modules that goes along with our current Tyler Technologies Public Safety Software. One is a WebCAD monitor application, which allows our first responders, law enforcement, fire, and EMS countywide to access real-time data from the CAD system. And then the Crew Force application is an interactive piece, which currently on an Apple platform, but it allows them to interact with the CAD system. So we can dispatch calls to them, they can interrupt themselves to the call, they can get real-time CAD information related to the call, they can chat between applications and between trucks and personnel within the department. What we did identify as a group with the nine-one-one Board of Directors is that these would be very, very beneficial. We've been moving through a CAD Enterprise upgrade. These two applications were not made available before that upgrade. That upgrade is scheduled to take place on January, I think it's fifteenth, two thousand and nineteen, and we'd like to make this purchase now so we can incorporate these new products with that upgrade.
Does anybody have any questions?
Funding is identified?
Yes, Sarah. Sure. And then Tom, go ahead.
What capabilities will you not have once you have this equipment?
What capabilities will we not have? We're not taking anything away. Some of the-
I'm saying, what gaps still need to be filled once you get this equipment?
Well, that's a hard question to answer.
Because now you can talk to each other, you can talk live, you can, you know, I mean, it seems like there's a lot of, lot of equipment that's been bought, a lot of purchases that have been made. I'm a big fan, I'm just saying, is there an end in sight? Are you, are you there? Are you almost there? Are you-
I'll say we're always getting closer. I never, you never know what's going to come down the pipe, right? What I will say is this big, fills a huge gap that we have today. Because currently, the only, the only way we can deploy this information remotely is through a VPN connection, so a secure connection back to our network. It's costly, it's expensive.
No, I think this is a great piece. And I'm not trying to be facetious, I'm trying to be prudent and say, is there, you know, is there an end? I know there's always the next new shiny thing, okay? But the question is, do we need every shiny thing? This, this we need.
This we need.
But are we almost there?
We're almost there.
Good man. Write that down.
Tom, did you have something?
No, I'm, I'm prepared to make a motion for, to approve his-
Okay. Go ahead and make the motion, then we'll continue.
Okay. I'd like to make a motion to approve the Tyler Technologies Public Safety Software.
Moved by Commissioner Mayor, supported by Commissioner Johnson. Further discussion? Go ahead.
Was Ming involved in, in this?
Yes, she was. And she put her blessing on it, yeah.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. Bob?
I'll say this, just like with the Road Commission, you know, you, you got the millage from the nine-one-one to make a, a ton of capital improvements because the money was not there. We would not be in the, the shape we are now without that millage. And I think they have used it wisely. There's some debate on, you know, radios and whatnot we had a couple of years ago, but I think they've used the, the money wisely. And, you know, moving forward in two more years, this will be up for another renewal. You know, where, what do you need? I think that tags into that question for, for you to think about for the next Board. What do you need? Because, you know, as you move into technology, the lifespan of some of this new technology is not like it used to be. So you constantly got to be evolving, and it goes back to safety for the officers, for the nine-one-one people, and for the public. The faster you can get response and know where people are at and what they're doing, the safer everybody is, so.
Sunny?
Well, you know, for, for thirty-six years, I carried one of those radios, and, and there was, there was a lot of times I wish I had some better information than what I had. And anything that we can do to, to provide better information to our first responders adds to the safety of the officers, the EMS personnel, the fire personnel, and the safety of our community. Because, because without that information, you, I went into an awful lot of places really blinded and real surprised when I got in the door. So, you know, it's, it's just really nice to act that we, we have the ability, and, you know, yes, it's great to have that next shiny thing, and there's always going to be that one out there. But, but what we've been able to accomplish over the last few years with upgrading our systems and being able to communicate with each other better, you know, I, you know, I've told stories of, of sitting at the bottom of the hill pumping water up to a house fire a thousand feet away, and I can't talk to the person on the other end of the, other end of the hose. You know, that's, that's scary. You know, but we, we've really made huge leaps and bounds of improving our communication with our own staff and with neighboring staff, and it adds safety to the community as a whole.
Okay. Anybody else? Okay, we have a motion on the floor. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, thank you, there you go. We will move on to the Drain Commissioner for Cass Road Drain Advance for the Miller Creek Property Purchase. Welcome, Commissioner Largent.
Thank you. Thank you.
Moved by Commissioner Gorfulet. Do we have a second?
Support.
Supported by Commissioner Wheelock. Go ahead.
Okay. And first off, if you don't mind, I'd like to also extend my thanks to, to Jim for, for being at every Cass Road, Cass Road Drain Project Meeting and hosting them at the Road Commission, and also for your participation in the dam's implementation project. Every, every meeting, pretty much IT meeting you were here for, so thank you. And I know one of his hobbies that is like, kind of not too many people know, is he loves to cut and heat with wood. And so he loves to cut wood, so, which you wouldn't necessarily, I guess, figure Jim would be doing that, but yeah, so, thank you. Thank you, folks, for having me here tonight to, to hear. This is a very critical piece of property that will help alleviate the flooding condition there at, on the Cass Road Drain Project. As you know, there's been historical flooding and current flooding that's been going on over the years, and part of that is Miller Creek is overtopping its banks. And when it does that, the storm water, or not storm water, but the creek flows to the north in behind these businesses. And right here, you can see the problem area is circled there. That's where Miller Creek overtops its banks during storm events, and, and then moves in to the north behind these businesses. The property in, that we're proposing to purchase is nine point nine acres. It's outlined there in the, in the yellow, and it will provide, provide us several options, including being able to put a bypass channel on here, which will take the storm, or the, the flows above bank full levels, elevations, and have them bypass. Instead of going north towards businesses, they will head southeast and enter Miller Creek, as you can see, down below the area that is being flooded. There's also another advantage to this project. We're going to be able to eliminate a culvert crossing at this site. This was at a cost of thirty thousand dollars to the Drainage District, and we will be able to eliminate the replacement of that culvert. We will remove it and, and have an open channel there, and so that's a savings to the Drainage District of thirty thousand. So thirty thousand dollars of this purchase price will be applied to the Drainage District as part of this, and the remainder then could potentially be recouped in the future through, Garfield Township has expressed interest in this property to add it to the Miller Creek Park, which is, would provide them an easterly access to Miller Creek Park, which is what you see there on the left-hand side of this, of this slide. So, questions?
Okay. Questions? Yes, Dan?
Couple years back, there was a, a plan to manage this. What happened to that plan and why did it change?
It hasn't changed. This is part of that whole, there's three things that will be happening. One is to alleviate that, that water that is flowing to the north from, from the creek overtopping its banks. Previously, it was recommended that we put a berm in there. I don't know if you recall that, but there was going to be a berm that was put to the north of the creek to stop it and kind of contain the creek. That wasn't a, wasn't the preferred option, and it would have been tough to get it permitted through the DEQ.
Hold on, wait a minute. There was a easement that was gotten for a dollar for that whole creek, where you could have dredged the creek and built up the banks.
Yes, exactly.
So why has that been abandoned?
There, well, for one thing, you wouldn't have ever gotten a DEQ permit to dredge that creek, it's a designated trout stream.
Did you apply for one?
No, but it's a designated trout stream. This is actually a better environmentally sensitive alternative to dredging Miller Creek.
Cheryl?
Yes.
Oh, okay.
So you can get a permit to put a culvert? It looks like maybe-
No, it's not a culvert. This will be a swale, just a, in fact, there will not even, all it's going to be is just-
So you can get a permit to then reroute the creek?
No, we will not be, we'll only be taking the flood flow as above the bank full elevation.
Okay. And then you're going to remove the culvert?
And then we will remove the culvert on that private drive.
So Garfield Township gets the property, how do they access the property?
They will have to put in a, like a pedestrian bridge, a footbridge, a full span, which is, you know, allows for a natural river bottom, and the hydraulic capacity of that stream will not be affected.
What, it, I would have appreciated having Spicer here to actually answer some questions, but-
That would have, yeah.
Why, why isn't Garfield buying it?
Right now, they are not in a position, there is, this is the way that we sought to proceed with this purchase of this property through the Drainage District, through the county, and then we would have control over it, be able to put the, this bypass swale on there, and, and then in time sell it to Garfield Township. They've expressed interest in it, in, as an end, to add to, as parkland.
Okay. In my time on the Board, I'll say that we've provided, in four years, provided probably four different times, we've provided funding to the revolving fund, which I understand that's, you put money in, you get money back. I've yet to see any, any money coming back from any of these programs, even started. Silver Lake Peninsula, I have a hard time shelling out more money and hoping that I see it back. Any idea when revolving fund is going to start revolving back to the county?
Well, I think you also have to look at the level that you support this position. And there's only so much time that this position has, and has to focus on the priorities. And the priorities right now is getting this work done so we can turn these, these projects into assessment districts, and then we can recoup that money. Right now, I'm focused on getting Cass Road Project through to bidding, which is going to be in January. I got the drainage ditch at Old Mission done, and that culvert cleaned out at Old Mission so that those folks don't experience the same type of flooding that they did last spring. And also got Silver Lake Outlet structure inspected and, and repaired, and the trian, triannual report done. And so all that done on ten hours on average a week.
Is, is there any of that, that, any of that paperwork regarding them assessments that, that staff can do, that administration can direct staff to do, so we can see this start coming back?
Oh, I'm, sure, we can work closely and see if that's something that-
Have you talked to staff about doing it, or?
Ah, yes, we, you know, we've been talking between Nate and I, yes.
Okay, and, and you've told Nate to go ahead and-
No, I haven't, I mean, we've just been discussing, it's-
Okay. All right. One other comment, then I'll drop it. This piece of property pays roughly seven thousand dollars a year in taxes that will not be collected from here on out. For a fifty thousand dollar purchase, I would, myself, I'd like to see the, the taxing authorities receiving that seven thousand dollars and, and find a way to work in that easement that has been provided for that.
There is, I, I would like to go back and, and because there is no easement on this property.
There is. I can show it to you. Want to see it?
I believe you, I mean, I, I just have to see the-
In fact, there's been seven easements made in two thousand and sixteen. This is one of the seven. Each one just cost a dollar.
Uh, yeah.
All right. I've got something more to say. Go ahead. You know, you said that this Board doesn't support you enough, therefore you can't get the job done.
No, I said I'm focused on the priorities right now, sir.
Okay, so how do we know that in the future, if we give this land to you, that you'll have the time then to get the job done? I mean, how about your annual report? It's been two years now.
Mm-hmm. And the year before that as well.
So, you know, when you accepted the position, you knew what, what work was involved, and I think you should put the time in to get the job done. And I don't like buying more land for this when we don't even know what the big picture is. What about what's happening down the road? How are we going to unblock the blockage or the slow flow on the railroad tracks?
We just had a meeting with the Director of Officer Rail for MDOT last week, and got three hundred thousand dollars pledged to that project, sir.
I, I for one, ladies and gentlemen, before we put more money into this, I'd like to see the big picture. I'd like to see his report. I'd like to see the engineers come here and talk to us about this, so we get a big picture of what's happening to the drains in our county. And, and I guess I would like to have, know why, if Garfield Township wants it in the end, wants this piece of property, why they don't buy it up front?
It's not, yeah, it's not a priority of theirs to own this property. They said that it would be, provide a, an easterly access to Miller Creek Park, so they could, you know.
And, and if, in fact, if there's an easement for that creek to work in, I would think we ought to work in there before we authorize taking property.
I would move to table. I, I made the motion earlier, but I would move to table.
Okay. Is there a second to table this?
Support.
Or further information? You support that? Okay. So moved by Commissioner Gorfulet, supported by Commissioner Klaus, to table this item.
Can I, can I just ask?
Yes.
Is that, is that at, to a date certain?
Is that to the nineteenth? Or is that indefinitely?
It sounds to me like we need more information, and I don't know if that information can be gathered by the nineteenth.
Oh, sure. Oh, sure.
If it can, that'd be great.
Yeah, I mean, for me, I don't have enough information to make a good decision, because all I'm hearing is your plan. I don't know, has this plan really been looked at engineering-wise? Has it been looked, vetted out by the DEQ? What are the other options? Yeah, you may not be able to get permits to dredge, but if, is that an option? Can you look at that? So, I, to me, there's a lot more options. I don't think, I guess I'd be surprised if it's ready in the next meeting, but if so, then that's fine too, so.
And I, I did have another question that, when you bring it back, would be nice to note, you said that you'll remove the culvert on that little red circle?
We have not done that. That's being proposed, and...
But that's proposed, okay. And then you want to cut this, what do you, a swale, called it?
Yeah, there'll be a swale, an overflow swale, that will be installed where you see the, the center.
Okay. So, do you know that you can get the DEQ permits to do that?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
And...
Because you're not working in that, in that stream channel, that designated trout stream.
Okay. And where would the funding for that work come from?
That would be the Drainage District.
Okay.
Part of the Drainage District.
We would recoup that from the Drainage District?
Yes, exactly. Just like, yes.
Yes, Cheryl?
So, Steve, when you come back, could you provide some sort of a visual of how this is going to work?
Sure.
Because I'm trying to envision, like, there's not going to be a culvert, there's not going to be a berm, there's, so all this water's going to go somewhere. It'd be really nice to see a schematic that would sort of show, like, when the tsunami hits of all of this water, you know, where it's going to go.
Okay.
That would help me.
And basically, yeah, and just basically, it will stay in its base flow channel. It's the only time that it would occupy this, this overflow channel is when it floods during, you know, goes above, you know, the bank full, you know, elevation.
Right, well, you gave us some great photos that showed us a lot of water, and that was very impressive. I'd like to see where that water's going to go.
Okay.
Okay.
Sunny?
Well, I think we all acknowledge that the Cass Road drain is something that needs to be completed, and, you know, I know we've, we've been talking about it for a long time, and unfortunately, we're, we're not there yet. So, so, you know, and I can, I can certainly see where the, this adjacent piece of property, while it's, it's $50,000, may take care of a lot of the problems because of the fact we can, if nothing, for lack of a better term, it becomes a retention basin, you know, because, because those businesses that are along Cass Road that are flooded, those are significant damage caused to those businesses with this flooding. We have to address this somehow, you know, and I guess, I'm a little concerned in that we haven't, we haven't developed, or at least I haven't seen, or I haven't studied, the Drainage Plan as a whole, to try to figure out, how does this piece fit into it?
Sure.
I, I absolutely see that it's probably a very significant piece to making it work. I just, I'd feel better if I actually seen what the entire plan looked like, you know, and I, and I know there's some other issues, you know, and Dan mentioned the, the drainage down where it crosses under the railroad track, you know, that's, 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 those are all significant problems, and it's been a backlog up to that whole Miller Creek watershed area, if you will. But, you know, I think what I'd really like to see is, okay, this is the Cass Road drain, you know, not look at, look at this piece, you know, not look at that piece of property. This is the Cass Road drain. This is what we're going to do.
Sure, and I'll, and I'll bring that back.
I think if we had that information, I think we'd all feel better.
Okay, I'll bring that back.
I'd like to see some options, too. Not just this one option, I think there are others, and that should be important to us about how we spend taxpayers' money, so.
Okay, Ron?
I would like to see that you say that the DEQ will not provide a permit for working in that trout stream. We just had DEQ permits to take a dam out of the Boardman River, and reroute the Boardman River. I really have a, it just doesn't smell right to me that they would stop you in a creek. So, I guess I'd like to, if you can get somebody here from the DEQ to say that, you know what? That's not an option. This is your only option.
That'd be helpful.
Does the administration have any comments at all?
I think that's a solid solution. We, we supported the concept because the Drain Commissioner has the right to purchase property, and we're hoping to move forward the project that is ongoing. Mr. Largent has worked a lot on this project, and is continuing to work through the difficulties of setting up the assessment district and the apportionments, and that is December 11th.
Yep, December 11th.
We have had significant conversation about all of these topics that we are discussing right now, and looking at ways to help the Drain Commissioner work through some of those issues, but he has a certain passion that he wants to do his job, and he feels strongly about that, so I'll give him that credit. So, I'm very comfortable with everything that's been discussed. I'd like to talk to Commissioner Lathrop about those easements, that's news to me, sir.
I'll be glad to give you the copy.
Yeah, so I'd like to look at that as well, and come back to you hopefully the 19th.
One other thing is that we're shooting to go for bid in January. We do not want to delay this project any further. If we delay it until we, the contractors start filling up and getting busy for next construction season, prices are going to go way up, and it's going to be a lot more than $50,000 that we see.
So, let's really make a big effort to shoot for the 19th.
Okay, thank you.
Is that work that will be, that will be being completed, like, through the winter? I mean, they're going to be...
We're going out for bids in January, and, and then receiving the bids. I don't have the schedule, I'll have it on the 19th, and then we'll be hopefully starting the project in March.
March, okay.
We have a final note from our piece. We, we will, if you remember the presentation that Steve made months ago on this project, there is a county's at-large assessment, and the $53,000, as described to you, will come off of that county at-large assessment. It'll be piece, it won't be additional funding, and that will be recouped.
Yep.
Correct?
Correct.
Because we're part of the Drainage District, too.
We are part of the Drainage District.
You are part of, so it costs us and the county more, the more this, you know, does delay too.
So, so then we will be paying a larger percent, because we will now own an extra 10 acres.
I'm not sure that...
No, that's not part of, no.
But that's not part of the...
No, 6.19% of, of the total project cost.
We split that with the Road Commission, correct, Jim?
Yeah, it's 12, no, that's the county's...
12.4 is the overall assessment, and the Road Commission has half.
Right, exactly.
Correct.
We just need a little more information, Steve. Okay, so the motion on the floor is to table this item until December 19th?
Correct.
All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. You got your work cut out for you, sir.
All right, thank you, and excuse me, I have to go to another meeting, so...
Okay, gotcha.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, we are going to move on to finance. We have 2019 vehicle purchases. First one is for facilities?
Let me, let me summarize this if we can. On page 57 is an item from me that kind of summarizes, actually, three items regarding vehicle purchases. We have the facilities vehicle bid summary on page 59, and then the Sheriff's Office has their information regarding the Dodge Chargers on page 70. My item is basically to just summarize that we had asked for a number of vehicles in the 2019 budget request, and we had also mentioned that we were trying to identify funds in 2018 to make those vehicle purchases. And I've also thrown in, because I've worked very closely with our Equalization Director, their vehicles are in sad, sad condition.
Shouldn't be so hard on them.
Wow.
So, the resolution on page 58 addresses all three items.
Oh, so it's one, one thing.
The purchase of the vehicles for facilities, the purchase or the authorization to order the vehicles for the Sheriff's Office, and I would really ask for your permission to buy, yet this year, a good, used, reliable vehicle for equalization, because we are piecing, we are holding their vehicles together every week they're in the shop. And the one thing that's not identified in the resolution is that we have a 2001 Crown Victoria that we're, that we're not using.
Well, that's in there. I think it's in the resolution.
No, I, I forgot to mention that we'd like to trade that vehicle in if we are able to find a good vehicle for... So, I guess to make this as efficient as possible, we have Joe Berry is here, if you have any questions. He did go through the process of bidding out. He, he worked with some of our local vendors, and that information is summarized on page 59. He has a recommendation to purchase four trucks from Fox Grand Travers. He, he's noting that with our 5% local vendor preference, they would be within our purchasing guidelines. He did look also at the state of Michigan pricing, and that's indicated here, so hopefully that's self-explanatory. And then Captain Clark, if you have any questions regarding the Dodge Chargers, and in both cases, with the facilities vehicles, we did identify the funds in the 2018 budget to purchase the two additional, and we've also identified funds within the Sheriff's Office to purchase the additional vehicles that are not presently included in the 2019 budget. Does that make sense?
Yes.
We have the funds to do all the items that we're requesting authorization, and we're asking for authorization now because of the time that it takes to get these vehicles in the production queue, so that they're available as soon as possible in 2019.
Madam Chairman, I would move to authorize the purchase of vehicles for the Facilities Department, the Sheriff's Department, and Equalization as outlined by the Finance Director.
Support.
Dan had his hand up, so we'll go with Dan.
I'd like to support that.
Okay. Moved by Commissioner Willock, supported by Commissioner Lathrop. Any further discussion? Bob?
You know, it's awesome to see that local, we're able to hit, hit local businesses and stay within that, that range, because that means a lot, too. We haven't been, always been able to do that, but that means a lot to be able to do that in this, this case.
It's unusual for us to be able to do it with police cars in particular, so it's really nice that they could get there.
And it's also, you know, they, they got creative with how to fill these, some of these requests, with bringing money that was in the budget from 18 over, and, and basically doing it all together. So, I give them credit for thinking outside the box on that, too, so.
What really made me understand we needed it was Dean's description, his, how awful they were.
We'll have to have a chat with him.
That just won me over right there.
Should be novelist.
When he seems to get excited, something's wrong.
I believe it's safe to say, and Jim is here, I honestly, I got tired of telling him, I don't have a solution for you, so that's why we're asking for this.
Well, the other thing is, our duct tape expenses were going up so much.
Yes, we can't afford the duct tape.
One of the vehicles, one of the vehicles that you authorized to sell recently, we did have the door. One of the doors was actually taped shut, because we could not keep it shut.
Is there something wrong with that?
I don't think it's safe for our employees to be using that.
I would assume there will be a second piece of this at some time or another, because these vehicles are being purchased to replace other vehicles. At some point or another, we're going to see a list of surplus vehicles that will also be put up for sale.
You will?
And, you know, I...
That is correct, but I would...
Chris always does that, and, and we always, you know, we always talk about, you know, how many extra patrol cars we have, you know, and, and I don't know how many, how many times I've, I've driven out, no, we're good, but how many times I've driven by D and W, and I see a whole bunch of patrol cars setting out back, or, or different facilities throughout the county. I think what we need to do is, these, we have made significant moves to improve our fleet over the last couple of years, and, and I think we really need to evaluate where our current fleet is overall, and anything that we don't need, we will declare surplus and get it out, get it out of here, because having those cars setting out in the parking lot doesn't do any of us any good.
Yes, Dean?
If I could, I would like authorization to declare the equalization. It's a 2001, it's a 2001 Dodge Caravan, has surplus right now, so we could possibly use that as a trade-in on our vehicle.
Well, you know, the way you've described it, how much you think you're going to get for it?
I was going to say, you'd be lucky to get $500 for the thing.
Are you sure you don't just want to scrap it?
I'll take offers.
We'll be lucky if they take it.
Sad, sad, couldn't you? They are sad.
So, Sunny, you're okay with adding that to your motion?
Yeah, I'm fine with that.
Dan, are you okay with adding that? Okay.
Mr. Baker had something there, too, I think so.
Jim once said it.
Do you have something to say?
He just took care of it, thanks.
Okay. Anything else on this? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? And Dean will take offers on...
Dean, can you let me know what you get for that 2001 Dodge? Because I am just curious as heck. If you don't have to pay them to take it, I'd be stoned.
I'll try not to do that.
Yeah, really. Okay, we'll move on to facilities. The Hall of Justice needs a boiler.
So moved.
Moved by Commissioner Gorfalat, supported by Commissioner Johnson. Now, you can come up. Do you have something to, if you have anything to tell us about it, now's the time.
You support it, too, I'm sure.
We, we read it, so, you got anything else to tell us?
Anything to add besides what was in the packet?
Upon approval, it'll be about a two-week lead time to get the unit here, and then we'll have it running by Christmas.
Perfect.
Time for Santa.
Awesome. And time for Santa.
Excellent.
Again, I'm still terribly frustrated with the fact that this, this equipment's 10 years old, and why is it having to be replaced already?
The new one does have a 10-year warranty, so...
Oh, boy!
You know, but, but, you know, when I look at the, the stuff that we've had to put into the Hall of Justice, that is only a 10-year-old building, it's amazing to me that we should be there. I just, I don't understand how we're there.
Well, he's going to develop the maintenance plans, it may help, but stuff just doesn't last as long as it used to either. I hate to say it. They don't build it like they used to.
It wasn't built well.
You know, so...
It was not built well.
But, I know he's on top of the maintenance plan and getting all that stuff, and, you know, helping, try to extend the life of it.
It's kind of back to that thing, just because it was the cheapest bid doesn't necessarily mean it was the best equipment to put in there.
Sometimes you pay for it.
And, and we've seen that a lot in this project, I think.
And, you know, you know, with the financial constraints the county's had for the last few years, you know, it's, it's good to see at least we're moving with some of the capital improvements that have been sorely needed, so.
Ron, did you have a comment?
Joe, with the, the boiler that you've got listed there with Aetna, is that the boiler that Sharon's putting in?
Yes. Sharon and Aetna were the only ones that replied to the bid.
Right, so...
And Sharon was lower than Aetna, so I just went with their cost.
Oh, okay, so Sharon's bid for installing a boiler?
This is just for purchasing because of the lead time.
Okay, this is just purchasing the boiler from Sharon right now, then you'll come back to us for installation?
Probably not, because it's not going to be over the purchasing limits to where I have to bring it back to the board.
For installation?
For installation.
So, this is just strictly buying the boiler?
Strictly buying the boiler.
Okay. All right, that's what I was curious on. Thank you.
Anybody else? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, there you go. It's like Christmas. We'll move on to the Sheriff's Office. Who would like a drone, correct? Who's going to...
Lieutenant Barsh.
Tell us out.
I made them all.
We'll take, we'll take the hot seat.
Madam Chair, move we approve the purchase of the DJI Matrix 2010 Unmanned Aerial System and Sensor. I would love to see it armed, but I know we can't do that, so.
And the TrueNarc Handheld Narcotics Analyzer.
Do, no, they have to be separate. Do we, do we have a second?
Support.
Okay. Moved by Commissioner Johnson, supported by Commissioner Claus. Tell us about it.
Well, thanks to our current county administrator, former undersheriff, who began our program about a year ago, we use drones for numerous reasons, and I've identified it in the agenda item. Search and rescue, collection of digital evidence, fatal traffic crashes, officer safety reasons, we've used it to search for people who fled from traffic stops or homes on warrant attempts. on warrant attempts. These have become almost a regular tool for us, almost like everything that's on our belt now. And this particular tool, the 210, allows us to add two sensors to it, unlike the prior drone that we purchased. And we've learned over time that there's value in that, to have the capability with one pilot to switch to a zoom lens or switch to a thermal lens, rather than bring it back, land it, because sometimes they could be a considerable distance away. And depending on the mission, it's inefficient. So we've learned, too, over the time, is that off-the-shelf drones that we purchased initially are not designed to be flown in all weather, you know, high winds. And, you know, it's pretty obvious that it seems like we're raining snow more than we are sun in warm weather. And these drones, the 210 and a prior drone that we have allow us to fly in all weather. And just because of the demand for us to use these on a regular basis, it would just allow us to deploy them in multiple situations. And the thermal technology with missing people, elderly people with dementia who are wandering away from AFC homes seems to be a typical event that we're responding to. And there's just so many reasons. I don't think I have all night to explain and, you know, to give you those ideas. But they're valuable tools, and, you know, we can deploy it quickly. It's a lot cheaper than a helicopter that, you know, we call the state police. You know, you've got all the time it takes for administrative approval, and a lot of times you just don't have the time for that to happen. We're able to get the call and deploy it quickly, and it's a matter of, could be a life or death, depending on the situation.
Okay. Anybody have any questions? Ron?
I can't seem to find it in the packet, but you had a price on three different companies providing the same tool.
That's page eighty.
It's the same tool.
And you're going with the highest, the largest cost to the taxpayer? I mean, help me defend that when someone asks me.
We have made prior purchase with NOR Technologies, was based out of Troy. And prior to purchasing a drone in the past, that company came up here and demonstrated its capabilities and met with us. And then when we made the purchase of a prior 200, they offered to come back up and instruct us how to use it. But because we were, I was familiar personally with how to use them and the technology, that I didn't require that. But they've been extremely great to work with as far as service and support, and I think that has some value to it, versus going with a company that you're not familiar with or you haven't dealt with. So that's my way of defending that, is this is, you know, I could pick the phone up and call Mac and say, hey, I've got trouble with this. What do we do? And, you know, it's just something that we've experienced, great service and support.
Question.
Yes, Cheryl?
So why don't you pick up the phone and ask Mac to meet the low bid?
I certainly could, and I wouldn't doubt.
That's what I would do. If I, in the real world, that's what we do in the real world, okay? When you get three bids, and you like somebody, you call them up and say, I'd really like to give you the bid, but you're a little bit high. How about if you bump it down a little bit? Is there a rule in government that you're not allowed to do that?
I always thought there were, personally.
I don't think Chris could probably, that just doesn't sound right to me when you have sealed bids. You know, it'd kinda defeat the purpose of sealed bids.
You get the sealed bids, you open them, you know, I don't, I mean, it sounds like, from what Lieutenant Barshaf is describing, I mean, it sounds like it's fair and appropriate. I mean, I certainly understand where you're coming from, Cheryl, that in the private sector, you would.
Well, it's fourteen hundred bucks. You know, it's fourteen hundred bucks, and you have a relationship because you bought it from him before. But if you buy one now from this guy in Holland, you might develop a new friend there and have a great relationship with him. And he is the low bid.
But our policy does say lowest qualified bidder. And I think that's what Lieutenant Barshaf is explaining to the board, that he finds this particular vendor the most qualified, given the relationship.
So Macatawa is not qualified to bid? Why did we accept their bid if they're not qualified?
It sounds like it's a subjective.
Something we should look at, certainly. I don't.
You know, I mean, I'm not gonna make a major issue out of it. But again, you know, we're going through the bidding process, and then we don't take the low bid. In the last one, we didn't take it because they were within the five percent local, which makes sense. But in this one, it's like, well, I had a prior relationship. So it sounds like no R is gonna kind of be our people going forward, because you've got a relationship with them, and it's not really gonna matter what other people bid, or you might find that other people won't bid, because they know that you've got a relationship, and that's gonna carry the day. So it's just a slippery slope.
I think we've actually done this previously, where we've actually reached out to vendors and talked about, and I think specifically, Captain Clark can refresh my memory, it may have been through Bill Marsh, when we had this discussion about the patrol cars previously. We had a relationship with Bill Marsh for Chargers. My deal came about, they could never match that price. We went back to Bill Marsh and talked to them and said, can you match this price? So I think the practice has been done previously.
But isn't my deal, though, isn't that available? Can't the general public see or somebody on my deal, so they could see? Again, my concern is with the sealed bid, going back and saying, hey, can you lower your bid?
Yeah, anything over ten thousand.
That's my only concern with that in the government sector, I guess. So how much maintenance is required on these for the, is it FLIR infrared?
Yep.
How much maintenance is required, and what is their maintenance rate versus any of the other companies? Or do you?
I have, so this, the FLIR camera that, this is brand-new technology.
Okay.
It's just right out of the box. So I don't know, I don't know if there's enough history for us to say, hey, you know, this is gonna be the demands to send it in and get it repaired. I don't know that I could answer that with the.
Can they, and again, I support this.
And you're talking FLIR is a company that manufactures stuff for the military. It's military-grade equipment.
Yeah, I used it in the Coast Guard for twenty years, on the Falcon that's sitting out there at the airport. I flew in that thing for twenty years. So we used it all the time chasing drug planes.
Oh, quit your bragging.
Everything else. So that was old version, and we worked on it a lot, too, though, so. But I, yeah, I guess we can nickel-and-dine this to death. I see the need for it. I mean, if it saves time and saves, you know, where you don't have to get an officer into some tight spots, you know, any of these standoff situations. I would envision a day when everybody's carrying these personally, an officer, you know, just like every other tool that they carry.
I support the technology. I'm questioning why we're not taking the lowest bid.
I know you are.
Those are two separate issues.
It is Christmas time, isn't it, Scrooge?
Oh, my. Okay. Nate, go ahead.
I'm not seeing anything immediately in the purchasing policy that prohibits the practice of going back, so I'll work with Lieutenant Barshaf, maybe contact the company directly and say, hey, you know, here's the situation, you're not the low bid, you're in fact the high bid. Can you match that price? If this board is comfortable with that.
Are we bidding apples to apples? So that's the question.
It's exactly the same.
Where the difference may be the maintenance and the time it takes to turn around to get it repaired.
Well, one's in Troy and one's in Holland. I mean, you know.
Well, I guess you look at it, you hear the argument all the time, you could go to Home Depot and buy, you know, not to be critical of different businesses, but you go to Home Depot and buy something cheaper, and then go to Dewise and pay a little bit more, but you get that hometown service and that expertise when it comes to repairing things. So, and I guess that would be an argument why it's good to go with somebody that you know, that's trusted, and has been there for you in the past.
Carol?
Yes, Dan?
Yeah, that's true, but, and I, and I'm not, I'm thankful for the work you've done, and I think, and I think you could probably be right. But I wonder why we go through the process of bidding if we're not gonna take the low bid? You know, it's, I, I agree with what you say, that we could form a relationship with a new person just as well. So I'm concerned about that, too.
Nate?
I think if this board is comfortable, I will go back with Lieutenant Barshaf and make contact with the company.
Thank you.
But we could approve the purchase in theory.
We can approve the purchase, maybe not approve the vendor.
We can do that.
If we just approve the purchase of the drone, we don't necessarily specify the vendor, is that acceptable?
And then you can tell us at the next meeting.
Is that acceptable to the motion maker and the second?
Yes.
Okay. Tom, did you have a question?
Yeah, I was just wondering, how long has the sheriff's department been using drones?
About a year and a half.
Oh, that's not very long. I really like the idea that you could use it in search and rescue. Is there an example that you can tell us about where it really was helpful, and you maybe couldn't have accomplished the task the same way by any other means?
Well, the Randy Day missing person on the bay, that searched on the night he was reported missing, all the Neatwana Point, all around Power Island, Center Road, from Power Island north to Bowers Harbor. There was a missing kayaker on the Boardman who, you know, you could go walk up and down the shores, but when you can fly this thing, you know, within line of sight, you can fly it a mile away.
That heat signature really is pronounced when you see it. You'd be amazed at how that will just pop up at you.
It is pretty amazing. We assisted Leonott County several months ago with a barricaded gunman situation, and we were able to deploy that over the home and give that intelligence back to the ERT team to make decisions. So it's hugely valuable.
Yeah.
We had a drowning reported on Boardman River near Logan's Landing early last year.
Oh.
And had we not, the canoeist, the reporting party knew where the body was, but we couldn't see it. So we popped the drone up, and there was no way we could have gotten that, to that victim easily without that drone.
Wow, that's great.
Any other questions or comments on this one?
My last question would be, you know, there's a lot of law enforcement departments in our area. Are you all sharing some of this equipment, or is everybody buying their own, or?
I've found that some departments have leadership that don't want to go down that road of technology. We've made it pretty obvious to our neighbors that we have this technology, and if they were to call, we would assist them, which we have been. And, you know, we, it almost seems like we use it on a regular basis. And, you know, it's all about saving lives and safety. And if we have to go over to Leonott County to help them out with it, then we do that, as we do all of our neighbors.
Okay. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Stay right there. Are you on this next one, too?
I am not. That's Captain Clark.
You're not? Oh, okay. Captain Clark, you would like a True Narc handheld narcotics analyzer.
Correct. Chris Clark, Captain Sheriff's Office.
So moved.
Oh, oh, hold on.
So moved.
Support.
Moved by Commissioner Johnson, supported by Commissioner Willak. Go.
All right, go ahead.
Now you can go.
You should've got all the information in your packet.
Yeah.
The best way I can explain this item is, is the state does have it, is that it's, we can take packaged unknown drugs, shoot this at them, at that packaged unknown drug, and it'll tell us what it is. So it is a really officer-safety piece of equipment that will benefit us immensely. It'll identify four hundred and fifty controlled substances in their packages. So with the carfetanol scare and the fentanyl, this is a really valuable tool for us to make it safe, not only for the deputies on the road, but also when we do send drugs to the crime lab, it's also making it safe for those technicians in the crime lab as well.
So how do we identify them right now? We don't have one of these, correct?
No.
So how do you identify a substance in a little baggie, and you don't know what it is?
What we do is, a lot of times we just send it to the lab, and they have precautions they use there. We did have someone drop off a pottery substance at the law enforcement center, and because of the safety concern, we were able to have the state police come in with their True Narc reader and determine that, what that drug was. So instead of vacuuming the whole building, so.
How does this analyze it? Is it intrusive, or is it just visually?
You just hold the item over that package, and you're pushing some buttons. The best way I can kind of explain it, it's sending like a light signal out towards that item.
Looking at the wavelengths or something?
Yeah.
So it's an infrared? So you're not, you can, it's a safer method by far than to analyze this, so you really don't even have to touch the substance if you don't want to until you know what it is?
Right, because we're at the point right now with certain pottery substances, we're not even field testing them. So that, this will also help with prosecution as well, because we'll know early on what that drug is.
Nice. Tom?
Yeah, this is off-subject, but I was just wondering if you could tell the public, tomorrow recreational marijuana becomes legal, can you give them some advice to stay out of trouble?
That is very, very much off-topic.
The advice to the public?
Yeah, what would you tell the public?
Well, I would probably tell the public that we have an excellent relationship with the prosecutor's office, that we are working on how to properly enforce that new law that has been passed.
Okay. Back to this item. Any other questions or comments on this one? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, there you go. Thank you. All right. Construction code and IT. Recommendation of a vendor for construction code software.
So moved.
Support.
Moved by Commissioner Gorfallette, supported by Commissioner Johnson. Ms. Ning and?
Bruce.
Bruce, right. Oh, add a little blank right there. Go ahead. Tell us.
So you want me to do my spill, or you?
A short little summary, yes.
Short, because you've got a lot of words here.
Summarize it for us, please.
As much as I can.
I know you want to give us as much information as we need.
And we read it. We read it.
We did.
Actually, I'm very excited. I work with the booth the last couple months, and sent out the RFP and learning the workflow in construction code. And I think that will be awesome for, you know, for him to not have to do all in paper. And then for the public-side thing, I think is really good PR for us, we go into the twenty-first century I keep talking about. This definitely give up, give the stepping stone getting closer, like Jason said. We definitely can do those with the client portal, so they can see the status. So hopefully we do the card, people don't have to come in to check on the status. So all those things are gonna be in place and have, we have credit, you know, they can pay through a credit card in the portal, can set up appointments through the portal, so not like, not so, some of the small jobs and stuff like that doesn't really have to have to come in anymore, that type of thing. So definitely more streamlined.
Okay. Cheryl?
So again, highest bid, lowest annual cost, so give us your justification.
So right now, IT work with three existing vendor that bid the, actually put the bid in. Tyler, which is the one, is actually on CAD and all the correction have already, we already have a relationship with all three vendors. The lowest bid, I'm not gonna say what application we use, but we have a large application with that vendor. They just bought out from another vendor, the, three months ago. We work upgrade with them with one of the module, and we found out that none of the support know what they're doing, because the other company bought this company. And even like, as soon as I mentioned that name to my staff, they like, please don't pick that one, like, we know it's the lowest one. And the second one, the second winner up is, I work another big project right now with the CD would be SNA, and also the Tyler project upgrade, which is another significant upgrade. I just feel like Tyler have better offer, because one thing, if we want to do the customer-client portal, BSNA only have eight-to-five support. Tyler have twenty-four-seven. So if we want to get to the twenty-four-hour support for people can submit, you know, their application, I want.
And you think that's important, because there's gonna be people at two and three in the morning who are gonna want that support.
Yes.
God, that's sad, isn't it?
I would think it's at least give IT and booth team, after five o'clock, we can fix the issue. We can tell them next morning, you can submit your application, right? So I think that piece is huge, why we're gonna go to this streamline than if we cannot support our public on that. So that's why.
And I appreciate that explanation, and that makes sense to me. Maybe you can comment. We've had unfortunate experiences with vendors and software, and not getting what we thought we were getting. Do you have any, I mean, I'm really glad that you caught this now, because we haven't been so lucky in some other ways. I mean, what can we do to protect ourselves? Because we're all so vulnerable, you know? We go out, we try to buy these things, and then they turn out that they don't do what, I mean, are you comfortable that this $279,000 purchase isn't gonna be a pig and a poke? You probably don't know that expression. Do you know that expression, a pig and a poke?
No. Are you comfortable with Tyler?
I'm very comfortable, because if I'm not comfortable, I will not recommend it.
Okay.
Because I do not, like, not just tech director, I have to work with the department, learn their workflow to do my recommendation, the suggestion, what they do, and they have to live day-to-day, right?
And Bruce says he can live with this.
Yes. Yes. So I'm definitely comfortable with the decision here.
Ron?
And this is an enterprise fund that the construction code is, and it's not any, it's not any dollars that we, that, you know, come out of the general fund, and Bruce and his department have to make sure that he can afford this and future expenses. So it's really, he has to come here for.
It's a capital investment, basically.
He has to come here, you know, for our approval, but it's all his dollars.
Well, it's still taxpayer dollars in one way or another.
Well, it's, no, it's.
It's not assessed. It's through the fees.
It's taxpayer dollars, but it's from fees. It's from fees from users.
Users, exactly. Not all the taxpayers. Yes, Bob?
And this will enhance the usability.
It'll enhance their experience.
It's amazing to me, you know, in this day and age and technology, how far behind the county is in getting to where we have access twenty-four hours a day, because people don't just work eight to five, as you know, you know, and are able to do that. So if you make it easier, you know, I'm all for it. Yes, I am for it. So how does this fit into your overall plan? Is it gonna interface with the other systems that you want to bring in?
Actually, that's another decision-making on the Tyler project. Because Tyler, right now, we spend a lot of money on the correction side, and actually did a very good job in the software. And actually, that software also has ERP, and also have the court side. So eventually, my goal is to narrow down as small as. So eventually, my goal is to narrow down as small as application we can handle and set all the silo. And I think Tyler can help that piece, all the silo piece, and we don't have to do the API conversion with, you know, the, both different third-party vendor have to talk to each other, that type of thing. So I think that, actually, that's one other thing, is the decision-making. When I make a decision with department head, try to kinda say, hey, let's look at a county as a whole, not just a one department juvings decision. And I think this one is the best decision of all three.
Very good.
Okay. Sunny?
Well, I think the, the key point that Ron made is the fact that this is an enterprise fund. The users, the people that are buying the permits, are the ones that are paying for this. And, and I do believe that, you know, there is a huge consensus out there that those people that are paying those fees are not completely sure they're getting the service that they need. If this, this will enhance that service, I think that's a great thing. Because, because there's, you know, there's definitely a lot of contractors out there that don't think they're getting quite what they, they think they need to, to the project. And, and with, with a community that's growing as fast as ours is, and as many projects as there are, you know, there's no one in the office who can track all of that either. So if we can help use the technology to make, make that work better, I think that's a great thing.
Ron?
Being a contractor that works in multiple counties, uh, in northern Michigan, Grand Trevis County is by far the best, most proficient, um, office when it comes to the building department. This will help them, um, make it better, I'm sure. But, uh, they are, um, steps above any of the surrounding counties, so I wanted to note that.
Something as simple as being able to take an online payment. I mean, imagine how that happens.
I can't believe we weren't.
We're, we're not, right?
Okay.
So it has to be to the T, but now we can take online payments. And this has been something Bruce has been working on a year and a half. So, uh, something just got missed previously, and, uh, we wrapped back around with Bruce, identified it as a need. He has the sources to fund it, and I think it's an appropriate move.
Anybody else? Anybody else? For the whole class? Is there a motion on the floor? There is. Okay. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Moving right along. Pugsley redevelopment agreement.
Madam Chair, I move that we go into the Pugsley redevelopment agreement.
Support.
Moved by Commissioner Johnson, supported by Commissioner Gorfulet.
But I do wanna listen to Bo and his team.
So this is a way to tee this up. In the, uh, meeting room tonight is Jim Tischler from the Michigan Land Bank. You have Terry Street, who stepped out from Fife Lake Township. Bovore and Craig Wesley from North Bay. And then Captain Clark, of course, he's been working with this. And Mr. Forsythe has put a lot of time into constructing this agreement and working through a, a band of attorneys, and meetings to get this document to you.
Condolences, Chris.
We actually brought this to you, I don't remember the application date, but Jim probably will. Sometime earlier this summer, uh, for approval to submit the application for purchase from the Michigan Land Bank for the dollar. Ultimately, uh, Jim, you wanna come up and explain how that transitioned and the relationship with North Bay now?
I didn't see where Terry went, but...
See him out there.
Good evening, Commissioners.
Hello.
For the record, my name's James Tischler, and I'm the Development Director for the State of Michigan Land Bank Fast Track Authority. Let me give you a little bit of background to start. In, uh, if I recall, late April of this year, uh, in response to Public Act 334, signed by the governor earlier this year, um, the Land Bank Fast Track Authority submitted, um, a request for proposals for use and redevelopment of the, um, the area, which we, you would know as the Camp Pugsley, the former Camp Pugsley, um, prison camp location. It's approximately 179 acres, uh, Walton Road over near 131, uh, in Fife Lake Township. Uh, we received proposals from a number of respondents. Um, one of those proposals was from Grand Trevis County. And it was for use of the area that we would refer to as the gun range, as you've seen in the documentation. Uh, we also received a proposal from an entity called, uh, North Bay Investments. And we subsequently, we, the Land Bank, chose to select both the county's proposal and North Bay's proposal, and to proceed to enter into discussions, lean to negotiations for the agreement, which we see here in front of you tonight. Uh, this agreement, um, by some requirement, needs to be different than a standard land agreement for a couple of reasons. Uh, one is that the current gun range is a leasehold situation between the Grand Trevis Sheriff's Department and the State of Michigan. Second is that because the property has, was, has and, or wasn't, has been a prison site, it's exempt from local zoning regulations by state law. So this, uh, relationship of, of lease or between the Sheriff's Department of the county and the state has been going on. And so with the property going to be moving to, uh, a private ownership scenario, it now enters the local zoning reg- regulation. So the reason for the complexity in this agreement is to allow for a transition of the property from Land Bank of the rest of the property to North Bay Investments to go in, and with support of Fife Lake Township, who also was a party to this and will be petitioning your planning commission for rezoning, as you see, have you seen in the document. It also provides the opportunity for, uh, the county's interest in the gun range to be facilitated, frankly, at the least amount of time and the lowest cost that I think the parties agreed that it could be done. So, um, what we understand is approximately 20 acres, give or take, subject to final survey and such, would be proposed to be conveyed to the county pursuant to this agreement, assuming this board executes this and all the other parties execute this agreement, after a, uh, planning and assessment, including environmental assessment process, uh, is undertaken. And if that is successfully consummated, then the, uh, agreement between, as proposed between your administration and Land Bank would be to convey the property for the sum of $1 to Grand Trevis County for your use, uh, continuing use as a gun range. I'll stop there, um, because I think that gives you a little bit of groundwork, um, and ask if the board has any questions.
Cheryl?
I know that there was a gun range in Elk Rapids that ran into some trouble, because, um, they had been gifted a parcel of land that was being used as a gun range. And it was, um, it became contaminated because of all of the spent cartridges.
Beg your pardon?
It's the lead.
Yeah, because of the lead. And, and so it became a real quagmire. It became a public relations nightmare. Are we protected, uh, in the event that, uh, something like that happens?
Sure, yeah. And we do, we do have a clause that allows the county to get out of this. Prior to closing, if we're not satisfied with the environmental assessment. And we are, we are working with Altwell Mobbie. Mac McCollum is our consultant on the environmental end of things. We're also working closely with Scott Howard, since he's the environmental attorney. And so we certainly are dotting our i's, crossing our t's. Uh, I don't, I don't know if Captain Clark has anything to add about the, the Elk Rapids situation? I think that did come up in, in our discussions at, at some point.
Well, I'm not concerned about its pristine condition right now. I'm just wondering what happens after we've used it as a shooting range for X number of years and it's full of lead.
What, what may happen, Commissioner, is that there, there may be a do-care plan, that DEQ will require us to submit and then file in the future. And that may be periodic lead removal.
Perfect.
You know, sifting through the existing berms, going through some type of removal process. It's something that we, we've been talking about.
Thank you. Good.
Just, just something, uh, for you, Cheryl. That, that may have been a place where they were shooting shotguns, which spreads lead all over. And, and you can, you can collect quite a bit of lead on the entire surface of that range.
That land was, was, I think, gifted, and it was supposed to ultimately be a park or something. And then it couldn't become a park because it was so tainted with lead. And I don't know, it just turned into a real snake pit.
I, I just wanna make it clear that this, this gun range, this, this has been strictly law enforcement, and it will continue to be strictly law enforcement.
Super.
Oh, and once, hopefully, we take possession of that property, we'll establish a range management plan in accordance with the NRA's guidelines. So that would be a, we'll have the baseline study done for what's currently there. But going down the road, we'll, we'll do a round count. Every training session, we'll know what's being put in the ground. We'll know at this period of time, that will be the time that we need to do lead removal. So we'll have a, a definite range plan going on from now to manage, uh, that lead that's going in there.
Thank you. Anybody else?
I think one of the other things to remember is, you know, the, where the water table is in this, in this location compared to where the lead's going to be. And lead is a product that travels very, very slowly as it, as it goes into the soils, you know, unlike some other things. You know, we have, we have some significant time. And when the, when the environmental study, you know, the environmental baseline study is completed, I think we're gonna see that, yes, there's lead in the soil. I don't think any of us would ever question that. But, but it's, it travels at such a low rate of speed that it's not gonna be an environmental or a health hazard to anyone in our community. You know, and, and I'm sure that, you know, like Captain Kirk mentioned, you know, there will be a plan that at some point these berms will be removed, sifted, new, new material will be put in. So it's that the, uh, so it's that the lead is, in fact, collected. You know, I, uh, you know, I have a nephew or a cousin who owns an indoor range, and they have just a huge problem with the lead.
I bet.
You know, the lead and the sulfur balls.
Terry or Bo, do you guys have anything to add, or?
Any comments?
No, I think we can summarize what, uh, talked about.
Okay. Okay.
I would, I would mention that early last spring, Jim came and spoke to the Grand Trevis County Land Bank about, you know, their goal to put this property back into, into some civilian, uh, use in our community. You know, I, I think, you know, all of us recognize that the state made a decision to take Camp Pugsley out of here. And in doing so, they took about 700 jobs out of our community too. So, you know, the fact that we get the property back on the tax roll at least is a benefit back to our community. And, you know, and I thank him for his time and his effort to make sure that happened.
Tom? If, if you're gonna talk anymore, you have to step up to the...
Gentlemen in the back row. He has to, he has to go to the microphone.
Yeah. The people at home can't hear you, so. That's okay. Tom?
I was just saying, they're knocking on the glass, 'cause he has to go to the microphone.
Yeah, okay. Anybody else?
Terry Street has never followed the rules good, right, Terry?
Madam Chair.
Yes.
Just one final point for the board's understanding, um, because this is a multi-party agreement. You are, you are the first party to consider this agreement tonight. Tomorrow night, and, and assuming that this board favorably considers this document, Fife Lake Township will convene and they'll consider, uh, their role in execution of this agreement. Following that, uh, it's anticipated that North Bay Investments will execute. Uh, they have authority vested in their C, uh, CEO, as well as the Land Bank. And so, uh, I anticipate that if those mo- actions move, we probably will have a fully executed document. And as I've been saying, day clock one, uh, pursuant to the agreement would probably commence sometime next week.
Okay. Thank you. Yes, Bob?
You know, there's, there's a wonderful development that's gonna go in there. And they're basically wanting to be good stewards of that property. So, you know, we've got a, a gun range that, what are you gonna use it for? Use it for gun range, to help the law enforcement here that really won't have any, any similar facility close by here at all. So, you know, and for a dollar, pretty cheap, you know, yeah, we may have some remediation, but, um, you know, and, and I just think it's a good first step to getting more jobs out there, so.
We, we've been using this site for a while, right?
Correct. Yep, many, many years. In fact, we, I, I would, it's safe to say, we use it more recently than Pugsley has used it, prior to them closing even.
Anything else? Yes.
I would just like to thank Terry from, in Fife Lake, um, as well as, uh, Bo in North Bay. This has been a true example, again, of a public, uh, private partnership to get something that is good for us and good for them. It solves our problems, so thank you very much. I appreciate you guys being willing to entertain it. And again, Jim, thank you for all your work. Captain Clark and Chris Forsythe, they put a tremendous amount of hours into this, uh, just so we could have this range. But the relationship we've developed, I think, is critical. Thank you.
All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Thank you very much. Okay, we'll move on to old unfinished business. I did add, um, the EDC appointment for that board. Um, it, it came to my attention this past week that there was some confusion, um, among people who may have wanted to apply to be on the Economic Development Corporation Board, um, that apparently there was a misunderstanding, and they thought that, that those appointments would be made in January by the new board. So there are people who wanted to apply that didn't because of this misunderstanding. So I just sort of wanted the board to know, and, and I wanna know if it's okay with the board, that we extend the deadline for applications for that board to five o'clock on December 10th, which is next Monday. And then interviews will take place on Friday, the 14th. Is that okay with everybody, that we go ahead and extend that? And I wanted the public to know if there's people out there who would like to apply for that. Any objection to doing that? Tom?
What was the reason somebody didn't understand that there was a deadline already?
Yeah, the deadline is sort of, I think, our, our sort of soft deadline for all the boards is 10 days before the interviews take place, from my understanding. So the public doesn't really know when the interviews are taking place until we schedule them. And so, and when we say the board making appointments, there's a big difference between this board appointing people, the public, to other boards, and the new board in January appointing commissioners to sit on those boards. So there was some confusion in there as to when each of those processes takes place. So...
Even key people in the current EDC were confused.
We're not, exactly.
They thought the appointments were not being made until January.
Right. So there were people who wanted to apply, and the word on the street was, well, you don't, you don't have to do that until January, when actually this board are, we are the ones that appoint citizens to the boards before we leave office.
So how are you getting the word out, other than here?
I think the word is already out.
The word is out. They've asked us to do this.
People who want to apply, they're just waiting for the nod.
They've, they've asked us to do this, and I just wanted to make sure that it's okay with the board and put it out to the public for whoever's watching. You have until five o'clock on December 10th, on Monday, to get your application in. Uh, and interviews will be on Friday, the 14th. So we're all good with that? Yes, Tom?
Well, I'm gonna abstain, because I'm just not keen on extending deadlines. And the other thing is, is that I'd have a, a conflict, because, uh, I'm gonna be part of the public.
Okay.
And I am asking to be, uh, an applicant. I filed my paperwork.
Gotcha.
And I'm on the list, so I don't know who thought they should also be on the list, but...
Okay.
Doesn't make me comfortable thinking that the list should be any longer than it is, so I shouldn't probably vote, so.
Okay.
Well, we're not voting, no.
Well, yeah, we're really not voting. We're just saying, is it, is it in general okay? And we've noted that with you in general, it's not. Anybody else?
No, he's abstaining. He didn't say it was not.
Gotcha. Okay? Is that okay? Okay. All right. We have no new business? Now is our chance for second public comment. If there's anyone left out there who would like to make a comment. I see lots of shaking of heads. No? Okay. We have Commissioner Department reports. Short, an announcement or notice only. No big updates. Tom?
Yeah, I, I'd just like to say that I hope, uh, tomorrow goes well and that, uh, it doesn't, uh, you know, the whole environment doesn't change just because recreational marijuana has become legal on December 6th. And that, uh, people probably need to have a new slogan about driving. And it is, uh, don't drive, don't drink and drive and smoke either. Uh, because the combination of different, uh, drugs, alcohol being a drug essentially, is a, is a really bad idea. And, uh, driving and doing that is a really bad idea too.
Okay.
So I suggest, uh, you know, other means of transportation for those that are gonna be, uh, celebrating the day tomorrow.
Okay. Smoke responsibly. Cheryl?
Um, I just wanted to say that, um, this isn't a, a department report, but a, a commissioner statement. You know, we've served our term uncompensated. And I would just like to challenge the next board and the board after, and the board after... And I would just like to challenge the next board and the board after, and the board after, and the board after, to think about serving without compensation. Because this is a public service job. And I served on the college board for 22 years with no compensation. TCAP serves with no compensation. Public service is an opportunity for service. And none of us went without food, clothing, or shelter because we didn't get our $7,000 stipend or whatever it is. And I think that the public's money could be better spent than that. And I just would challenge future boards to take a look at whether or not they really need that money. And it isn't that we don't deserve it. We deserve a lot more. The point is, they could, they can't afford to pay us what we deserve. And I think we do a better service by, by not being compensated. So I just throw that as a challenge for future boards.
Anyone else? Tom?
Well, it always goes back to, you know, this compensation as to whether we really can draw all the different types of people who live in the community. And I, for one, just saw it as a challenge when I was told we wouldn't be getting paid because I knew it was an effort to get people to not run for office. And since I dislike that so strongly, trying to control an election by cutting people's pay, that I went for it anyways and did get elected. So I have sacrificed. I'm not in a retirement-type position. And I would really like to see that people take it seriously, compensation of commissioners, and not just take it for granted and not just, you know, say it's, it's not important or I don't do it for the money. Because in my case, I would have actually been helped considerably by doing it for some money. Even the $7,000 would have made a difference in my life and in my wife's life because we sacrificed. That's what we did for two years. We sacrificed.
Anybody else? Any announcements, notices?
I'm assuming that you signed the CMH contract, correct?
Yes, sir, I did.
Would you like to announce that that contract has been signed?
I don't know if the other party has signed it.
Oh, okay.
So, yes. It has been executed by myself.
I was hoping that that contract had in fact been executed.
I have executed my part of that contract, yes. Yes, definitely. Anybody else? Okay, we have current job openings. We are always looking for correctional officers, deputies, and seasonal law enforcement deputies. We are still also looking, always looking for a medical examiner investigator part-time. We are currently looking for an assistant prosecuting attorney that closes on December 14th. An office specialist in central records that closes December 12th. And a public health nurse, and that closes December 7th. So if anybody is interested in any of those, you can get information at www.grantrevist.org. We have no need of closed session?
Nope.
So with that, we are adjourned. Thank you very much.
Thank you.